The republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. All right, welcome, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Garza. Do you have any announcements and or reminders tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I sure do. I have quite a few, so bear with me here. On behalf of municipal court, we want to remind the public that in honor of Child Passenger Safety Awareness Week, our municipal court, through the seat inspection program, will have an event on Thursday, September 21st, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. in the community center parking lot at 2905 East North Street. To register for a car seat inspection, please visit victorietx.gov/carseat. We also want to remind you and the public that our next regular council meeting was actually moved from Tuesday, October 3rd, to Monday, October 2nd, and will take place at 5:00 p.m. on that day. And of course, that was in because of the National Night Out events that'll take place on that Tuesday. And so, on behalf of the Police Department, we want to remind the public that those who would like to host a block party and receive a visit from first responders, they should contact the Police Community Engagement Unit at 361-485-3808, or email policecu@victorietx.gov. On behalf of the Fire Department, we want to remind the public that they will hold a Super Mario Brothers themed fire prevention show for the youth on October 12th and 13th at 1:00 p.m. at the VISD Fine Arts Center. I hear the mayor is going to show up as Donatello. I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. That's the name for turtles. Yeah, yeah. On behalf of Environmental Services, we want to remind them that in conjunction with Keep Victoria Beautiful, they'll be hosting Phase 2 of the Queen City Neighborhood Cleanup on Saturday, October 21st, from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. Volunteers will meet at Will Rogers Park, which is located at 1108 East Warren, to assist residents in moving large items to the curb for pickup. Area residents can request assistance by calling Environmental Services at 361-485-3230. Volunteers can sign up at the Keep Victoria Beautiful website at victorietx.gov/kvb. And lastly, as an announcement, we recently, with today's newsletter, put out a call-out for applications for the 2024 Citizens Academy, which is a four-week educational program that's beginning on January 25th, and will provide residents with an inside look at local government and show them how to get involved. There's no cost to register, and space is limited to 20 applicants. And so, we encourage our residents to visit victorietx.gov/citizensacademy to apply, as that deadline's approaching and will be November 1st.
Great. Well, thank you. With that, we do have listed, and a recognition, and it's a recognition of our outgoing Parks and Recreation Commission members.
Yes, sir. Council would like to recognize Mr. Lee Keeling and Mr. Mike Rivera for their service on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Both Mr. Keeling and Mr. Rivera have served on the board since 2014. The city does appreciate your willingness to serve your community and presents you with this plaque in appreciation of your time and service. I did want to mention that both of these gentlemen actually served an extra term that was approved by council on this commission in order to help us through that Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, we truly appreciate their service.
First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for having the confidence and voting for me to be part of the Parks Recreation. All the years that I've served, I enjoyed it, and I saw a lot of improvements. And the public can now see what the Parks Commission or the Parks Recreation Department has done for the beautification of Victoria. You know, right now, we're in the Dog Park and also the Dog Pond. So, keep that, and also, all the improvements of all the parks that are in the area. So, it was a pleasure to serve. And once again, City Council, thank you for your confidence, and I enjoyed it.
Well, I would just echo what Mike said, and I'd also like to especially thank you for introducing me to Mike, who I've been with for nine years on that board, I guess. So, and I've enjoyed every minute of that, too. There are a great bunch of people serving the city, I think, quite well on the board. We've gone from, at the time I started, very near the point of just deciding not to have a Parks Commission to having an active functioning, and I believe, one that's fulfilling its duty, which is to help you guys, which is what we hope we're able to do. We've got, at this point, we've got master plans of various kinds, up and running and going. All of these promise the citizens of our community some tremendous long-lasting benefits that I think were completely unheard of when we started nine years ago. And I'm very, very pleased with the work that the commission's done. And thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you to both of y'all. Y'all, I know y'all put in a lot of time. That Parks Master Plan is a big help as we sit up here and try to decide where to spend taxpayer funds and how to improve quality of life in the city of Victoria. And y'all's input has just been invaluable in developing that plan. So, thank you very, very much for the many years y'all spent on the Parks Commission. All right, I have one other one. We're very fortunate to have received a letter from Vincent Bridezak from San Antonio. And I want to read it to y'all. And I'm very proud that, you know, we have employees like this that work at the city of Victoria and promote Victoria. It says, "Last weekend, I visited Victoria to look for a place to retire. I stopped at the visitor's center and met Bridget Postle. She was so pleasant and helpful, she made me feel very welcome. She had enough information to keep us busy all weekend and events to look forward to throughout the year. I would like to think that she was so helpful because I'm just so good-looking. But it is obvious she is just very good at her job. I would like for the City Council to express my thanks to Bridget and acknowledge her expertise at the next City Council meeting. Thank you for your time, and thank you for sharing Victoria with your visitors." So, Bridget, I think you're here.
Yeah, she is.
Thank you so much for caring about Victoria. Great job representing the city of Victoria and sharing it with other people, and, you know, showing how much you love it, and all of us love Victoria. So, hopefully, we got two new residents out of it.
Honored to be in a native Victorian, and I tell all my visitors this, when they leave, so happy and grateful and appreciating my enthusiasm and knowledge. It's easy to sell something you love.
Yep.
So, that's what I do.
Well, thank you. Great job. All right, with that, we'll close publicly. Oh, no, Mr. Garza has one.
Yeah, I've got one more. You might have also seen today, we put out a press release in our newsletter that our Communication and Public Affairs Department recently earned a National Savvy Award from the City County Communication and Marketing Association, or 3CMA, for the department's social media coverage of the Green Ribbon Program Beautification Project on Loop 463. Staff worked with Environmental Services to share project updates on social media, using photos and humor to build excitement around the project, and responding to residents' questions and concerns. The project ended with a ribbon-cutting ceremony that was livestreamed by staff. Ashley recently had an opportunity to attend the conference and receive the award on behalf of the team. And so, I want to just thank her and her team. I know Shane's here, I think Sam just walked in. Thank them for all their work, and also, selling what they love, which is our community and their passion and love for getting the word out about all the great things we're doing. And it's awesome that organizations are seeing that work that they put together. So, congrats.
Great. Okay, with that, we will close publicly and employee recognitions, and go into items from council. Does anybody have anything? I have one item, and I've already talked to staff about it, but I would like staff to, and I know they're already working on it, but finding some way to have canopies at the soccer complex, just to have the participants have a little bit of shade. So, some way that they can bring their own pop-up canopies and not damage our irrigation system. Just figure out a solution that'll work for everybody. So, appreciate y'all working on that. With that, we'll close it and go into citizens' communication. And we have Mrs. Torres tonight, Ms. Miranda Torres. And while she's coming up, remember, we have three minutes to speak. And anybody that wishes to speak on any items C1 or C2, the ones with the public hearings, will have a separate time period during that to speak on those. So, yes, Ms. Torres, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Miranda Torres, and I am the owner of Alpha Lab Nutrition, where we provide healthy teas and protein shakes. We are here this evening to express some concerns that we've been included in the Food, Oil, and Grease Program from Environmental Services regarding grease trap qualifications. At our first location at 1908 North Laurent, we were inspected back in October of '22 by Specialist Michael Dietzel. His report stated, based on the information provided and physical inspection, the City of Victoria ECNC's staff has determined that this location does not qualify for the FOG program or additional requirements from the City of Victoria's code ordinances. Yet, after opening our second location at 8607 North Novero in July 2023, we were inspected in August by pre-treatment Specialist Jill Turner. Her report also stated, "The grease interceptor does not have any grease or sludge buildup at this time. However, we are being told that we are now required to be in the FOG program by Environmental and the Director, Mr. Ken Gill. We had a meeting with the city environmental employees and asked them to show us in black and white how we now qualify to be in a program compared to last year, not qualifying considering our menu has not changed. The definition paperwork given to us by the city specifically states, "Every food preparation and food service establishment where meat, poultry, seafood, dairy products, or fried foods are prepared and served." None of these things we serve or prepare at our businesses. We also received TCEQ regulatory guidance paperwork. The very first question is, "Am I required to have a grease trap?" The answer states, "A grease trap is required for any facility whose business activity is a source of cooking grease or oil and sewage," which, again, is not used at our businesses. Based on the city's definitions, we do not fall under this program, which is why we don't qualify, which why we didn't qualify in our first location. According to the city, the ordinance hasn't changed in eight years, which brings us back to the reason we are here this evening. The City of Victoria has given us a deadline to get this grease trap cleaned and tested by the end of October, and we feel like we need some clarification as to where they are now finding a source of grease, oil, or sludge to qualify us for this program. In closing, we would like to know, we would like you to know the cost for the maintenance is over $8,000 a year for our two locations. This would take us out of business, lose employees, break contracts, and truly disappoint a community that supports Alpha Lab Nutrition. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Mr. Garza, is there someone with staff that can make sure to get with her?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then that'll be this week?
Yeah, I'll make sure we follow up tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Torres. Bringing that to our attention, we'll look into it. All right, we have Ms. Glenda Nickel.
Yes, sir, I'm speaking on the Parks applicant for the Parks Commission. Is this the correct time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Good evening.
Yes, I've submitted my application over the summer to become a member of the Victoria Parks and Recreation Commission. I've always been a lover of the outdoors, and I currently visit our city parks weekly using the walking trails, biking and nature trails, playgrounds, splash pads, and river. My inspiration for joining the Parks Commission came while attending toddlers on the trail with my grandkids. They are the fourth generation of my family to enjoy the parks. The toddlers on the trail occurs at different parks throughout the city. Some of them I'd never visited or even knew that they were there. These events helped me to appreciate our park system more and to realize what an important part these public spaces play in our lives. My background includes being a math teacher and with my husband owning and operating small businesses in Victoria for 30 years. I have served with many nonprofits like Sandafon Study Club, Golden Crescent Casa Perpetual Help Home as a volunteer, and in leadership roles, including president. Skills for all these positions required organization, project management, accounting, payroll, budgeting, problem-solving, and working with boards of directors. In 2021, I attended Citizens Academy and learned even more about how our city government works, and that also inspired me to become more active in our community. John Muir once said about parks, "Everybody needs beauty as well as bread. Places to play in and pray in, where nature may heal and give strength to body and soul." Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Nickel. Mr. Fisk. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. All right. I have also applied for a position on the Advisory Board for Parks and Recreation. And to my qualifications, I'd like to mention a few other things. I believe there is the kickoff this weekend for the National Night Out Program, which is being in the park. All right. Secondly, today is National Voter Registration Day. I personally will be able to register voters at the library the rest of this week. And of course, you can register at any time at the Patty Dobson Center. And of course, I want to remind people of the Friends of the Library Book Sale, which funds go into running library programs that might not meet the budget, otherwise. Anyway, you know, I'm active in the community. Perfectly willing to speak in front of this or other groups. Have a fairly diverse background. But what I pride myself most is taking things and trying to make them a little bit better. All right. I think the parks are excellent, the employees are excellent. I live essentially on the edge of the park. They provide lots of wildlife entertainment that I get to see on my deck on a regular basis. The skunks, not as much, raccoons, I don't mind. Possums are good. And then the deer make sure that I don't plant any hibiscus in the front yard. But anyway, I'd like you to consider my application. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Ms. Shelley Oldman. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Oldman, and I'm the club manager of the Victoria 4H Shotgun Club. And I have our President Jeremiah, and I have a couple of our other members with us tonight. We're here today representing our club. Our club has about 60 youth between the ages of 8 and 18, both male and female, and their families. We would like to thank the City Council and the Hotel Occupancy Tax Subcommittee of the Tourism Advisory Board for selecting our 4H Whiz Bang event as a recipient of the Hotel Occupancy Tax Award. The profit from this event allows us to send members to shoots where they have the opportunity to win scholarships along with other prizes. It also allows for our club to help pay for practice and ammo for our many members. We greatly appreciate being chosen for this award. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Good luck this year.
Thank you.
Mr. Von der Aal. Good evening.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Just wanted to thank Jesus for the Keep Victoria Beautiful. The next one is October 21st of the other part of the Queen City area. And it's really a mess. I hope someone can clean it up. I hope they have extra staff, you know. And they probably need a staff of attorneys to come, too, to sue the landlords, because they won't trim those branches that's growing over people's roofs and, you know, all over the place. I mean, those branches really need to be cleaned. And anyway, there was a shooting at Christ Kitchen, and because of that, law enforcement is giving extra security at Christ Kitchen. And I appreciate that. And on December 5th, the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Task Force made seven arrests there, and I hope better police patrol can patrol, because, you know, there's, it's just a history of drugs. It's the only park where there's no swing set or slide. They took it down, they took the barbecue pits down, and it's not a place for kids. And the basketball goal, they don't even use. And I wish they could just tear it down and make it a parking spot for the volunteers that work real hard. And a lot of the people that go there to eat, they're not homeless. They have full-time jobs, and maybe they're going to Victoria College. And I would like to see law enforcement security, you know, inside the kitchen from like 11:00 to 1:00, just so people can be safe when they eat. I don't know if that's possible, if a deputy or a police officer could come. But it's just getting more dangerous out there. And I appreciate everything the Police Department's done. They've, you know, made lots of arrests by Christ Kitchen and stuff, and they just bail out and then just do the same thing. And I hope they can, you know, sentence them to long prison sentences and make it into a drug-free zone. But that park has no use for anything. It's just a bunch of sketchy people just doing drugs all the time. And it's just not right what they do. And this has been going on for years and years, you know. I eat there like once a week just to check it out and stuff. And, you know, I appreciate all the help and everything. And one else was like, and oh, yeah, the panhandlers at HEB, you know, they're not wearing shirts, and they're trashing out the place at HEB. One panhandler, that scrawgly-looking dude with the beard, put a bunch of trash on the fire extinguisher and stuff. I wish someone could do something about him. Thanks, and have a good day. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Aal. Ms. Claire Santinella.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm Claire Santiana. I curate the VTX Art Walks Downtown. I own Crossroads Art House. I'm co-owner of the Viva Texas Film Festival and Jupiter Horizon's gallery. We just had a huge festival this last weekend. I hope you guys enjoyed it or saw something about it. But I'm here to talk about the Mitchell Variance Request. Art House is inside of Mitchell now, and we do plan on doing some really great things for local artists. Whenever asked to, we did a survey to the local artists, and 70% of the surveys came back with the art walk being something that had advanced the arts the most in Victoria in the last year. And I work really hard on that. And I'm going to bring that same energy to Mitchell, but it's crucial that we keep the green space. So, it's just, it would be a travesty to get rid of the green space. We just have so many cool plans with Viva Texas Film Festival, ways to help the artists. It's a really hard time right now in the economy, and the artists are really feeling it. And I want to do everything I can to help them. And we want to do family events, both my business partner, Carissa, with Viva, and myself, our moms. And it's really important to us to have family-friendly things. And I think that a lot of the downtown area has gotten a lot of attention and has positively improved. But that area over there, Mitchell is like amazing for that area that James remodeled that. It was just a rotting building, and he put a lot of effort into it. I think that we can really help the families that live over there. And it's a food desert, too, and we plan on, we want to have like a market out there once a month. We already spoke with the Golden Crescent, and they're on board with the food bank, because some of those families don't have a means to do stuff besides what's provided to them in the area. Some of them don't have cars. I used to be a teacher in VISD. You'd be surprised how many of the students actually just don't even have vehicles to get around. They've never been to the beach, even though it's only 30 minutes away. So, something, quality in that area would really, really help everyone there. It would help the artists, it would help local musicians. It's just so important to keep that green space. And we can do movies on the lawn with Viva and have hot cocoa, and like, we could just make it a really, really quality fun environment for everyone. And I think we've proven that with our events, that we put on safe events that are high-quality and that help the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Worden.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. James Worden, I'm the owner of Mitchell School. This is an appeal to a variance request to Section 2192 for Mitchell School in order to allow for approval to develop the property without providing additional off-street parking. Mitchell School is a landmark historical campus that has been repurposed for general commercial usage with retail and business occupancies. It sits on a full city block in downtown Victoria. The campus includes five structures with a monitored fire alarm system. The school had been closed for over four years and was in a state of decline prior to purchase last November. Only two bids were submitted to purchase the campus. I submitted a bid. I submitted a bid only after consulting over a year ago with the City of Victoria Building Official in collaboration with the Victoria Fire Department, who confirmed that a dual occupancy of mercantile and business would be permitted as a change of usage from their prior education occupancy. The intentional repurpose of the campus is to make it a family-friendly environment with an outdoor play space for the community to enjoy. This means that occupancies such as nightclubs or funeral homes would not be considered. Mitchell School is 60 feet northeast of the designated downtown business district, which is exempt from off-street parking requirements. This area of downtown has been dominated by Memorial Square, the railroad, and freight warehouses since the 19th century. The non-arterial streets of William, Deleon, and Commercial provide little to no city-measured traffic count. This area of downtown is not different in nature than the downtown business district, as the district has multiple locations where residential occupancy abuts commercial occupancy. The main school building received a certificate of occupancy this July with approval of a new striped 28-space parking lot, including two ADA spaces and a new concrete commercial driveway. This replaced an existing parking lot that offered only eight spaces and a non-conforming driveway. With the new Mitchell parking lot, the street parking adjacent to the school block, and the street parking adjacent to Memorial Square, there are 105 parking spaces, 105 parking spaces, which is far greater than the 68 off-street parking spaces that city staff has offered as a potential requirement for a wine bar or nightclub occupancy of the Mitchell outbuildings, which are currently unoccupied. Excuse me. I am requesting a variance tonight to the off-street parking requirement for the remaining 67 20 square feet of outbuildings that include a former food service building, an auditorium, and a gym space. This would mean that no further off-street parking requirement would need to be met to occupy the remaining buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wearden.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'm here on behalf of the variance for Mitchell as well. I have a toy store in there. I'm heavily involved with the property. The five criteria for granting a variance are met in this property, including the unique nature of the undivided Mitchell block that has evolved over 120 years. The granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public or injurious to surrounding property. The Planning Commission staff report provides no evidence of any traffic impact analysis indicating street blockages, congestion, or inability of residents to move freely in the area. A lack of traffic to the Mitchell campus is a greater concern for the overall viability of the repurposed usage. The ability of the free market to determine the best usage of the outbuildings to foster the family-friendly nature of the campus gives a project the greatest chance to succeed. On August 17th of this year, when asked by the Planning Commission if there is an alternative to the variance, the Director of Development stated that structured street parking could be a long-term solution. Unfortunately, while the repurpose has taken less than nine months, there is still no plan in place for the structured street parking, as the area around Mitchell is not marked. The City of Victoria Engineering Department has stated that the streets surrounding the campus are similar in width to the streets in downtown business district that support two lanes of traffic and two rows of parallel parking. In addition, there are no conforming residential or commercial driveways across from the Mitchell block that would be impeded by additional street parking. The current downtown business district has many areas where unstructured street parking serves the public, including only a block from the Mitchell School at the Public Library along Liberty and Commercial Streets. Victoria residents are accustomed to parallel parking in downtown where there is no striping. Striping comes at a cost to the city where there is no staff provided, evidence that there is a problem with the current non-stripe parallel parking in this area of downtown. Should the Mitchell campus usage grow exponentially, then that could be the appropriate time for the city to explore possible structured street parking when there is a proven revenue stream from an increased tax base related to the business activities that occur on the campus. Being in downtown business district in the TIRZ makes the Mitchell campus a legitimate contender to be a hub for the proposed Arts and Cultural District along the Welder Center and the Victoria Public Library. Let's not lose this opportunity for a historic landmark to serve as a catalyst for growing this important part of our downtown. Your approval of this variance request value of Victoria's belief and the rebirth of the Mitchell as a core contributor to our downtown business district as we move into our bicentennial year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll close Citizens Communication and go into items with public hearings. Item C1.
Item C1 is an ordinance, approving an ordinance, amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances by establishing a downtown entertainment district. This item is on second and third reading.
Good evening, Ms. Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of Council. I'll present to you today the Entertainment District Ordinance as prepared for its second and third reading. Thank you. So the proposed Entertainment District boundaries, this Entertainment District will consist of an eight-block area with boundaries at Constitution Street, Wanlin, Street, South Williams, and South Glass Street. The Entertainment District will also be located within the Main Street boundaries, as well as the Arts and Cultural District boundaries once designated by the Texas Commission of the Arts. The purpose of this ordinance is intended to incentivize businesses that are geared toward entertainment and tourism to locate within the Entertainment District. Since the first reading of this ordinance in May of 2022, we have seen a significant increase in businesses, business openings, and events within the proposed district with even more businesses slated to open in the next six months. I'd like to go through some highlights, a high-level overview of some of the major items that this ordinance will address. And under this ordinance, businesses may use public sidewalks for placement of items such as merchandise racks, outdoor seating, and sandwich boards during their hours of operation, as long as they fall within the parameters of measurements. The itinerary vendor permitting may be temporarily suspended. Note, events must be registered within the City of Victoria Parks and Recreation, with the City of Victoria Parks and Recreation Department. The itinerary vendor permitting requirements may be waived once the event organizer has registered their event with the City of Victoria through the special events application process. And I'll briefly review that process for you. Event organizers will follow the current special events process through event registration, which the event organizer will contact the Parks and Recreation Department to begin the special events application. Then they will be guided through a consultation that includes an overview of their event plans and what city requirements and permits are necessary for their event. Once they have satisfied all requirements and have obtained all necessary permits, the Director of either Parks and Recreation or Economic Development will issue their written authorization, considering that event then registered with the City of Victoria. Other items that this ordinance also addresses is a open container of alcohol will be permitted within the district. And it is very important, I want to make it very clear as I can, that the Entertainment District Ordinance does not supersede any local, state, or federal laws regarding sale or consumption of alcohol. All laws and permitting requirements must be satisfied from any necessary local, state, or federal enforcement entity. This ordinance will also allow sound amplification not to exceed 90 decibels at the property And under this ordinance, as I mentioned before, it will be measured at the property line. And a quick note, that most properties within the proposed Entertainment District are located at the front door, back door, each wall. There's practically zero additional area around those buildings. So the property line in a majority of these properties within the district are considered basically the walls of their structure up to the property of the sidewalk. And some examples, I wanted to go over a couple of examples of what 90 decibels might sound like. You can think of a lawnmower, an electric drill, a leaf blower, a hair dryer, and that sort of thing. So with a high-level overview of some of the items that the Entertainment District covers, I would like to answer any questions.
Go back to the examples of 90 decibels.
Yes, sir.
The hair dryer, certainly that's not at the property line, if you have a hair dryer.
I think that's more of kind of an example of what it might sound like if you're using it.
So, but our proposed ordinance is at the property line, not at the point that the music is amplified?
Yes, sir. It will be measured at the property line.
Do you have any things that are like, like, what would it be at the amplification point, if it's 90 at the border?
I do.
Because those examples are right at the machine or the device.
So originally, when we proposed this and brought to Council, it was at point of origin. We have completely removed that from this ordinance and have it just at the property line. So any measurement readings will be taken at the front door, the back door, or the property line.
Okay.
So currently, we, the decibel readings is 60 currently, correct?
Correct. Do we want to get some, do we want to take, have her take questions, or get public comment first, and then go back to some questions from Ms. Garcia, to Ms. Garcia?
Well, I think it might be appropriate, though, to distinguish the differences, because you may recall that our normal ordinance is based off of where somebody, the property line of somebody that is the complainant, or the receiving end of it. So when we went this route, we started at the origin, and then after feedback, we moved it away from origin to the property line of the actual establishment as a way to help ensure that the noise that's exiting that property is controlled.
But if somebody's right next door, that's the same spot? It's a shared property line. So the property line you're measuring from, the property line you're measuring to...
Yeah, it could go both ways.
Are going to be the same spot?
Yeah, could go both ways. Yeah.
Why was 90 picked? Where did you pull 90 out of, where did 90?
No, they did some research on that. Y'all can talk about that.
Right, so 90 decibels was pulled from, it was either Denton or Dennison's Entertainment District Ordinance. So it allows for a little bit louder sound, as to be true with a true entertainment district. Whereas in a residential district, in our current ordinance, it's 60 decibels, which is less, which is what you want, right? You want to have a more thriving downtown entertainment district in a more quieter zone in the residential area.
And Denton Main Street Board go out and take measurements while different bands were playing? Not just the same band, but different bands at different locations?
Yes, they did. VPD also, Victoria Police Department also took some readings, both at El Paso and Greek Brothers, in various locations, not necessarily just right up against the door, but they kind of fell back a little bit. And none of those, with the exception of one, exceeded 90 decibels. They were all fishing around maybe the 70 or 60 decibel mark.
Okay. Do you have some more?
No, that's my last line. Yes, sir.
Can you go back to the map of the proposed district? Okay, that borders a lot of residential houses or residential areas to the east and to the
Looks like Greek Brothers.
So I am concerned with the 90-decibel readings. I think it could be adjusted later, but right now that we're still a lot of residents in that area, I would like 60. I would feel comfortable with 60 decibels.
So, let's see. I'm just trying to figure out what's where on that map.
We do have a map available of the downtown area that will be passed out. It does indicate what businesses are within the Entertainment District and where they're located within the Entertainment District.
I like this one.
So one of the things, if for Councilmen, everyone, actually, one of the things that we discussed was that when deciding what the number was on the decibel readings, our current noise ordinance sets it at 60 everywhere in town. We were trying to find a way to incentivize business owners that own bars, own music venues, to move away from the rest of town where they have a more limiting sound level, and incentivize them to move into the Entertainment District so that we can start to sort of encourage them and gather up those businesses. So we felt like if we gave them a little bit more latitude in how much noise they can make, or how loud their bands can be, then maybe we could stop moving them, we could move them away from, say, Navarro, or somewhere on Laurent, or one of those non-entertainment districts. And so creating a difference between those two areas is going to be, in our opinion, one of the ways that encourages them to do that. So that's one of the big reasons why we felt like there needs to be a difference in number. And we discussed that if that does become a problem in the future, if we are getting too many complaints that is too loud, we can certainly go back and reevaluate that and amend it. But it was sort of our opinion that starting at a little bit of a higher level gives them a little bit of something to make them want to come downtown and open those bars and open those music venues as opposed to other places in town.
And I can appreciate that, but I think 30-decibel increase is a big increase. I would feel more comfortable at 60 or 70.
But the point at which you measure it is different, though. And so, I mean, we can't dismiss that, because that's a big difference. So for example, it might be 90 at the door, but it could be 60, you know, across the street where the person might live, right? And so we're not, it's important that we keep in mind that we're not measuring these things in the same place, so it makes it very hard to, you know, compare and contrast that. So just keep that in mind.
Exactly.
Well, in, you know, in thinking through this, a decibel is hard to ascertain. Like, I can see a car, and I drive a car all the time, so I know, I can make a rough estimate, a pretty good estimate accurately on how fast a car is moving. Decibels aren't like that for me. And so, you know, when you say it's measured at a different place, and it's 60 here or 90 there, I don't have a point of reference to say what that difference would be from point A to point B, because that's not something that really, you know, that I deal with on a day-to-day basis. My concern on this is that we have places in town now, under our current ordinance, that we have problems with, we have issues with. There's been a gentleman, I apologize, I can't remember his name, who's been here a couple of different times since I've been on Council complaining about the noise, at 60. And I understand we're measuring at a different spot, but to me, if we're having problems with the ordinance where it is now, to put in an ordinance that would increase that and potentially lead to some other problems, those two things don't make sense to me. And I've heard all the reasons behind, well, we're doing this for encouragement, to bring people in and come downtown. But at the same time, I also hear since 2022, we've had multiple venues come downtown, and more still to come, under our current ordinance. I guess my, in looking at it, my thinking is, if the ordinance we have right now across the city we have problems with, why are we creating an ordinance somewhere else with a higher decibel level? To me, I don't think you're going to encourage more businesses to come downtown because they can play their music louder. I just don't see that that's going to be, that's going to be incentive. I think we have to be mindful of the fact that we've, and I know you're going to refute me on this, but that we have encouraged people, hey, we want you to come downtown, we want you to do this, we want residential downtown. If we're increasing the noise level that's allowed downtown and trying to get people to move downtown, those two things don't match in my mind. And that's the big concern I've had. I've had a couple of citizens reach out to me, not only since we looked at this originally, and I know that I was, I had some concerns about it then, and those concerns still exist, but reached out to me since this has been on the agenda and said, hey, we still have the same issues, we still have the same concerns. What I hear from the people that live downtown now, that live close to these venues, is... What I hear from the people that live downtown now, that live close to these venues is we're in a place right now that's a symbiotic relationship from the standpoint that we're okay with them, they're okay with us. Everything's rocking along just fine. I don't want to encourage a change to something that seems to be working right now by bumping this up 30 decibels. I just, that's my concern on this, and perhaps folks downtown feel different, but I just don't see that it matches up to me.
My only comment is that the entertainment district is about much more than just this amplification noise aspect of it, right? And I know that next up is another item that's related to that, right? And so I don't want us to think that the entertainment district and the benefits of the entertainment district are solely just based off of this. The reason why we're focusing on this is because based off of previous feedback from council, this was the biggest issue within the entertainment district. And so that's why the focus on this particular item. And I think that we've made some adjustments, and I'm not sure if Kate mentioned them, but Allison might be able to help me with this on the timing, because one of the issues that council had brought up the first time we brought it forward to was the time slots because we were also proposing a different time schedule associated with the parameters around it. And so, can you help clarify that?
Sure, yeah. So we did draw back the time that they had to cut the music off from, I believe it was 2:00 AM to midnight so that we can make sure that these sound stops then, as opposed, is that not on?
Sorry about that.
You have to go back to all the way to the beginning of the meeting.
Rewind. Um, no, we did draw that back to midnight so that we could be sure that, for the residents in the downtown, that at least they know that that midnight is when it's going to stop on Friday and Saturday. So we did that. We cleaned up some of the language in terms of what they can do with their sidewalks. We made sure they were ADA compliant, things like that, and tried to make that a little bit more clear. We made some changes to the itinerary vendor ordinance, which is next, which was originally in this ordinance, but we decided to clean that up in a better way, which I think Kate will explain here in a minute. So we have made some other changes to this to try to make it as tight and as clean as we can. So that's, those were the big changes from the last one. So it wasn't just the sound part of it that we looked into and tried to make sure that it was as good as we could get it.
Right. And I recognize that, and I like, I like the changes that were done. I think this is a much better project. Thank y'all for the time you put into it. And I want to be very clear on this. I am, I am 100% behind this entertainment district with the one exception of being the noise, the noise part of it. I'm in favor of everything that it does. I think it'll improve downtown and make it better. But I have concerns about that one little small component. And so that's, that's what's behind my comments. Nothing else. The rest of everything is great, and y'all have done a good job on it.
And I have also gotten complaints for the residents downtown over the noise now, as it is now at 60 decibels. But at 90, you have to realize that a lot of things affect the sound. Humidity, the wind, the atmosphere that night. So 30 decibel increase is really, really large. I just, I'm not, I'm not content with that. But also, I don't want to jeopardize this district by just, by having a noise ordinance that high. But I also want to appreciate all the work that you've done, Allison and Kate, and, um, forgot your name.
Danielle.
Danielle, sorry.
At least you're honest.
Yeah. But I don't want this proposal to be jeopardized, but 90 is a big jump.
Why don't we stop our discussion right now? We'll carry on in a minute. And let's open up the public hearing on this item. So at this time, we'll open up the public hearing on item C1. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please step forward to the microphone.
Mayor, council members, thank you for your service. My name is Susan Armstrong Kane. I am a lifelong resident of Victoria, and as an adult, my family has only lived downtown, and we love it. The city of Victoria has an opportunity to continue the growth and development of our downtown area by approving the entertainment ordinance. The 2:00 AM to midnight is awesome. Nothing good happens after midnight. That's a great start. You will figure out the decibels, but this is an awesome place to start. I sit on the Cultural District Advisory Board for Victoria. We are working hard alongside the Texas Commission of the Arts to earn a cultural district status for Victoria. Prior to our application, we presented our plan at an advisory meeting with Ernest Luna of the Texas Commission on the Arts. While we were presenting, he increased the area of our layout every time we told him more about our downtown. Oh, yes, add that. What is that? Add that, too. He was impressed with Victoria, and he should be. We have a lot to offer. While on a trip visiting family in Longview, I took the opportunity to visit their cultural district. I will leave you with pictures that Danielle and Kate have. My family laughed at me as I squealed and gasped at the community works of art and culture. The brick designs in the street, the foliage, the signage. In over 100-degree heat, I was jumping in and out of the car taking pictures. I was proud of Longview, but I could see the potential for Victoria. Passing the entertainment ordinance paves the way for more tourism and economic development opportunities for downtown like a cultural district. I want to thank you for building a stage and a venue for outdoor activities in downtown. It's exciting to see the groundbreaking. The potential for entertainment of all kinds in downtown Victoria is exciting. Please join me in my enthusiasm and determination and pass the entertainment ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kane. Anybody else that'd like to speak on it?
How you doing? My name is Blake Trex. This is my wife, Mary. We are the owners of another Poor Decision Bar and Grill right across the street from here. We're going to be open soon, but I think it's an awesome idea to allow us to put tables, you know, sandwich boards, all that out there. You know, of course, following the guidelines of people moving about the sidewalk. I think it'd be a really great idea to bring people down here and, you know, of course, allow us more occupancy also. Just, I think it'd be a lovely idea.
And the noise for the decimal, it just has to be determined where it's going to be. I mean, nobody wants to run, we don't want complaints from other people. We don't want complaints from residents, but if it's at our door, whatever it is, or if it's at their door, that's going to be the big issue because that's a big difference. We own the barn in Mission Valley, so we get people out there that, you know, sometimes it can be too loud or sometimes it's not. But it just depends on where the measurement's going to be. So.
Thank you all.
Thank you all. Thank you all for being downtown, too. Good evening.
Hey, good evening. I was asked to read a letter from a Main Street Board member. I'm also on the Main Street Board, but Jeb Lacy was not able to be here with us tonight, so he asked me to read the letter on his behalf. "I regret that I cannot be present today to express to you my support of the Downtown Entertainment District Ordinance in person. But as a member of the Main Street Board, as your appointed chairperson of the Victoria Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board, and perhaps most importantly, as a resident of Victoria's blossoming historic downtown, I hope that you will accept and consider this letter as you determine our direction in downtown Victoria. People and businesses often flourish when unnecessary rules are cast aside, but they can also flourish when necessary rules are reasonable and clearly defined. Adopting this ordinance not only creates a space to encourage specific economic development that very much aligns with both our downtown master plan and the consensus of the citizens who contribute to its creation, but also clarifies many roles for those who are willing to invest their time and money in downtown revitalization. Much effort has been put into the crafting and evaluating the content of this ordinance to ensure that it is respectful of the needs of the individual citizen resident while simultaneously promoting the plan we have laid in place to make our downtown the destination we know it can be. I thank you in advance for carefully considering this ordinance and its impact on our downtown community. I know you will be especially careful to weigh the impact of creating a different acceptable sound standard for the Downtown Entertainment District that exists for the remainder of the city. Regarding that specifically, I believe that the establishment of a different standard within the small and heavily commercial and governmental downtown core is not only beneficial for our downtown, but for the remainder of our community as well. I'd like to mention that members of the Main Street Board of Directors, myself included, spent considerable time measuring amplified sound in the area in question during events that are already regularly taking place. Based on those observations, we made the recommendation to staff that have resulted in an easily understandable value that is in line with what is currently observed. In short, adapting these standards will essentially cap the volume of amplified sound for an individual business at a level that is already generally accepted by the downtown community on any given weekend night. But for the greater community, it also provides a value. By encouraging this effort in line with our existing plans, we not only incentivize development in this area by loosening some of the restrictions that are based on our observations overly restrictive, but also equip ourselves to disincentivize this type of investment in other areas of our community that are not similarly well-suited for, such as areas that are heavily residential. Much has been accomplished in the past few years in downtown Victoria, and I commend you all for your leadership in this effort. Not only has the overall economy of downtown improved, but the quality of life for both those who live and work downtown and those who visit has in most ways changed for the better. Residents, yes.
Pretty close to the end.
Oh, am I? Oh, yes, one more sentence. I strongly support this effort to continue to capitalize on that excitement and momentum. Respectfully, Jeb Lacy.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item, C1? All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll go back into either making a motion.
I move we adopt C1.
I'll second. All right, so we got it on the floor, and I know that there's some talk about the decibel level. Would it, would it make sense, I mean, you can make any amendment, but would it make sense if it read something as a compromise? The more restrictive of either 60 decibels at the receiver's end, or however it's already in the code, or 90 at the property? I'm looking at the map, and there's not a bunch of residences that really border this.
On Williams, there is.
Let's see. Is it William and Goodwin, that block right there? I don't, there's, there's nothing even there. The church is right there against the William part. There's a big parking lot across forest from those homes. And when I say, I mean, I'm looking at, it's in the district, but there's, there's not much of a chance of anything being there with the church there. And I'm looking on.
I'd like to make, propose an amendment. Propose to just lower it down to 70.
70 at the property line?
At the property line.
Okay, we got a motion to amend the ordinance to lower the 90-decibel level to 70.
You have to have a second on that?
You would have to have a second on that. I don't hear a second, so. Fails to carry a second.
So here's, I guess, the way I see this is I'm not convinced that we need a different rule downtown than we have elsewhere in the city. The one we have in the city isn't working in certain spots.
The one that's.
If we, wait, let me.
Okay.
So if we take the one that we have, the one we have right now in the city appears to be working just fine downtown. The current businesses that play music outside, the current businesses that exist and the residents that live here are all getting along fine. We don't have those type of noise complaints, at least that I'm aware of. And businesses are coming into downtown based on the current sound amplification ordinance we have. So if it's working, I don't see a need to try to improve something that's already working by giving them the ability to create an issue that we have elsewhere by raising the decibel levels that they could, that they could play downtown. So based on that, I would like to make a motion that the, uh, the ordinance that's in front of us, that we remove Section 21.143 sound amplification within the district so that the ordinance that we have in the city code would apply to the entire city as it currently does.
I second that motion. And my reasoning is because you said there's businesses already coming downtown?
Yes, ma'am.
And the ordinance right now is a stance, it hasn't bothered the businesses coming downtown, and I agree with, um.
Mr. Crocker.
I forgot your name.
Man, it's something going on that's.
I'm sorry, Mr. Crocker. Because, you know, can you tell us how many businesses have come into downtown since, let's say, we started with the first reading of this entertainment district?
Yes, ma'am. Businesses of varying type of commercial trade would be about 60, including smaller vendors inside of mother cluckers. So we've had a significant increase in the amount of business since May of 2022.
One thing I wanted to mention, the new performance pavilion would have to fall under this 60-decibel requirement.
I was going to bring that up as well.
What was that?
On Dealey on Plaza.
And our Christmas tree.
And the Christmas tree.
Well, hasn't that been the case for the last however long since we've had the noise ordinance? I mean, anytime we have bands out there on Dealey on Plaza in the past, we've had this statute or this ordinance already in place. Alls we're doing is continuing what we've already had. So I don't see that being persuasive to me from the standpoint that nothing's changing. We've already been having bands here. We've already been having the Christmas tree. We're just having the same ordinance that we had in the past.
But at the first complaint that we get, we will have to turn it way down.
And nothing's changed from every time we've had a band out there for the last however many years since we had the ordinance in place.
Okay, but you're saying you would turn it way down because we would have it at 90?
Right. So if you remember in one of my previous presentations, an ordinary outdoor concert is typically on an average 120 decibels.
At the source.
At the source.
Yeah, but you said you would have to turn it down from what? If the complaint.
Right. If we were, if we were, let's say we were conducting a regular outdoor concert and it was 120 decibels at the source, we would have to cut it in half, essentially. Cut the sound in half.
Well, you know, because it's measured under the current.
From 120 to 60.
Under the current, isn't it measured where the sound is being received?
Where it's being received.
Yeah, so you wouldn't have to cut it in half. You'd just have to cut it to where it's 60, to where it's being received.
Yes, sorry for that confusion.
It is confusing. I get it. I've gone through the same thing, trying to figure this out.
One clarifying point, the, the, or, when we've had complaints about the gentleman off of Laurent, it's not decibels that he's, it's the problem. It's the bass. And we don't have anything yet in our ordinance to measure the bass and the reverberation of the sound. That's what's rattling his windows. And, I mean, I still don't see anything that fixes that in our ordinance yet, and we haven't come up with that, that type of silver bullet to figure out the bass part. But I don't think it's the decibels that's the issue at all.
I'd like. I don't know that.
I'd like clarification on something. If I, if I live just outside the entertainment district and I complain about the noise, do you come to my house and measure the noise? Or you go inside the entertainment district and measure the noise? Because I think that's important.
Chief, you might have to back me up on this, but as my understanding, the enforcement would happen at the property line where the music is happening. Now, you get a phone call, you get the residence address. They say it's coming from downtown or it's coming from Greeks 205. They would go to Greeks 205 at the property line, take the measurement, and say, yes or no, it needs to come down or it's okay.
So Chief Young's officers responding will have to know. So Chief Young's officers responding will have to know whether an address is inside or outside of this district, because there's two different standards. And to me, that's, that's putting another burden on them. If there's one standard across the city, everybody knows what it is, and it applies wherever, wherever they're responding to that call.
As of July, we've had three complaints within the downtown area.
Were any of them substantiated?
Those were report, um, decibel levels. I don't have that information, but I can get it. I just know that there were three reported to PD at that time.
And somebody made the comment a while ago that if we get complaints, then we can always amend it back down. Why, why go that way and not the opposite way? If we get more venues downtown with music and they want it louder, they can, we can come make, amend a proposal to go higher, from 60 to 80.
I think Mr. Crocker kind of nailed it on the head. I don't know what I'm talking about when I'm talking about 60 or 90 decibels.
I'm guessing, I'm totally guessing.
I don't have a good reference point for it, so it's hard to make an argument for or against on my part.
Well, and I think that's probably where we would, you know, ask for, you know, some trust in the work that staff has done and some of the research. Obviously, you're welcome to come out, you know, with staff and, you know, do a tour to kind of see what that sounds like in real life, right? But these things can always be adjusted, you know, we can certainly do the amendment that Councilmember Crocker, you know, has brought forward and amend that later, too. But I just think that there's some level of work that has been put into the recommendation. We recognize that there's always going to be some enforcement challenges, even with the existing verbiage, as is proved by the different scenarios that have come up. So I don't think there's necessarily a way to foolproof any scenario from somebody not being inconvenienced by the noise, and I would simply just ask that we not necessarily let perfection be the enemy of progress, because I don't think there's a situation, a scenario here that just completely doesn't result in somebody submitting a complaint. Just my two cents.
I'll back you up on that, someone will complain. I mean, I like the music loud enough so that I can still carry on the conversation, and I'm sure it's probably less than 60 decibels.
Good music is good at 60 decibels and at 90 decibels. Bad music is bad at 60 decibels and it's bad at 90 decibels.
So if we're getting complaints and we're currently at 60 decibels, I don't see that raising it to 90 is going to do anything to help those complaints. I think we'll probably end up getting more complaints.
But remember, the source of measurement is different.
And, and it means absolutely nothing to me sitting right here, because again, I go back to, if, if, if the person who's complaining is right next door, the source of measurement is in the exact same spot under either one of these differing statutes. And, and again, and again, I go back to, I don't see a reason that downtown has to have a different noise ordinance than the rest of the city.
We agree with that, and so we actually attempted to change all, both ordinances, to change to a point, a source, which is what every other city does. Because to Councilmember Delagars' point, when you're basing it off of where the wind might take it, and when you base it off of humidity and other factors, then it's all over the place. And that's why most cities actually have a point-of-source aspect of it, because it eliminates all the other factors. It eliminates the factor of it being compounded by the bar next door that's also playing music. It eliminates compounding it by the environmental factors that Councilmember Delagars have brought up. And so what's in front of you here is based off of feedback that we received from council that you weren't in support of changing both ordinances to point of source, which is the way that every other city does it. And so we, what you have in front of you is based off of feedback and base conversation that we've had in the past. We agree that it makes sense to have the same thing citywide, but we would argue that at that, that if that's the case, then we would make it point-of-source citywide.
Yeah, well, what's not different, though, from this one and the other one is the 90 decibels. And specifically, the feedback from council, the first time it came up was 90, but 90 decibels is an issue. And what we got back was still 90 decibels. So I understand it was based on feedback, but it wasn't based on all of them.
Sure, but what was presented was 90 decibels at point-of-source. And so we've, no, it was actually 120. No, we had proposed a higher amount at point-of-source, actually. I think, I think the original proposal was actually higher than 90 at point-of-source. So, so the first iteration was 120 at point-of-source, and so we did take that feedback and change it to 90 at the door or property line.
At the door, okay.
Yeah.
But I, again, I don't have a sense for what that difference is going to be.
If I may, Councilman, there is an app on your Apple Watch, if you've got one. Currently, me speaking to you, measuring right now, I'm at 70 decibels. When I was listening to the conversation back and forth, that was about 60, 62 decibels for a small point of real-time reference.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to amend from what's in the ordinance to go to the current sound ordinance.
Basically, it would, the motion was to delete Section 21-143 from this ordinance.
And which would make the existing ordinance...
Apply downtown, correct.
...in this district. Okay, is there any further discussion on that amendment? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye.
Opposed.
So three to two, amendment carries. All right, we can always revisit that later. All right. So with that, we have an amended ordinance on the floor, on the table. Is there any further discussion on it? Thank y'all for working for the past year on this ordinance. I think it's a, whatever decibel level we work out with, Ms. Kane said it right, it's a good step forward. It'll be a good thing to have this entertainment district defined in downtown, so thank y'all. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, item C2, Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir.
Item C, I'm sorry, item C2 is to approve an amendment to Chapter 14, Section 14-52, ordinance to waive itinerant vendor permitting requirements within the entertainment district.
So the purpose of this ordinance is to amend the current ordinance that allows city designees to waive itinerant vendor permitting requirements in designated public spaces with approval from the Director of either Parks and Recreation or Economic Development. Those spaces would include Parks Riverside Park, Downtown Entertainment District, Community Center Park, and Ethel Lee Tracy Park. And the current ordinance can be found in Chapter Section, Chapter 14, Section 14-2, as Ms. Hilbrecht stated. So the edits to this itinerant vendor ordinance include requirement of event organizers to register events through Parks and Recreation Department, removing Deleon Plaza from the list of locations this ordinance will apply to, adding the entertainment district to the list of locations this ordinance will apply to, and removing Boot Fest from the list of city entities that are designated to approve the event registration. And just a brief reminder of the registration process we had discussed in the entertainment district. And that's it. If I have any questions.
All right, at this time, we're going to open up a public hearing for item C2. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward to the mic. No one's jumping up. With that, we'll close the public hearing. And entertain any motions.
I'll move for approval of item C2.
Second.
Yeah, motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion or questions for Ms. Garcia? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item C2, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Thank you very much.
Consent agenda, eight items on that. Ms. Hilbrecht?
Yes, sir. Item C1 is the adoption amendments of the regular meeting on September 5, 2023, and the special work session on September 8, 2023. Item C2 is a resolution approving a contract with Signs Consulting to perform ERP procurement consulting services in the amount not to exceed $74,740. Item C3 is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement for the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission to operate Victoria Transit, Victoria Public Transit for the fiscal year 2024 in the amount of $228,855. Item C4 is a resolution awarding the radio replacement project to Affinity Business Solutions Incorporated for their competitive sale proposal in the amount of $164,988. Item C5 is a resolution approving the purchase of a 40-horsepower pump from Odessa Pumps and Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $56,043.75. Item C6 is a resolution approving a multiple-use agreement for the, with text dot for the installation of a license plate readers to existing poles along US Highway 77 and US Highway Business 77. Item C7 is a resolution approving a services contract with Compadre's Design Incorporated for wayfinding, signage, repair, and replacement in the amount of $52,863.2. And item C8 is a resolution awarding the Dog Park Phase II improvements to irrigation by Jason Incorporated of Aguero, Texas for their competitive sale proposal in the amount of $82,232.98.
Still move.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item E1?
Item E1 is a resolution hearing and appeal to a variance request to Section 21-92 for the property located at 306 East Commercial Street in order to allow for the approval, approval to develop the property without providing additional off-street parking. The resolution is written to uphold the planning commission's denial, so if you pass it as written, it would actually uphold the denial. You may need to make changes if you wish to do otherwise.
Good evening. Hopefully, my teeth doesn't chatter. You know how this place gets so cold the longer you sit in the audience. So tonight, I am here to discuss a request that we received for a complete variance to the required off-street parking for the Mitchell School complex located at 302 East Commercial. So as you know, the school building itself is approximately 15,000 square feet, which requires approximately 60 off-street parking spaces for a retail use, if the building were to be exclusively retail. As you know, our parking requirements are based off of the use, and the, and the amount of square footage each use, it uses. So in addition to the school building, there are three other combined buildings with a combined square footage of approximately 6,700 square feet. One is 1,800 square feet, another 3,000, and then another is approximately 1,800 square feet. So as you know, the, the main school building was approved for a parking use of retail, which reduce, which required the 60 spaces. Our ordinance does allow me to reduce the amount of parking required for historic structures. So I reduced that required parking by over 50%, which is why the property owner developed the current parking spot with 26 spaces and two ADA parking spaces for the, that retail use of the main building. At the certificate of occupancy, I believe the building was approximately leased out a little over a quarter of the way. So the three buildings don't have, the three remaining buildings don't have a certificate of occupancy at this point, and there's no defined or declared use that we would be able to base a parking calculation off of, since there's no defined use for those three buildings. So the request is for a full variance for the entire complex, for the main building plus the three additional, to not require any additional parking. As I said, the ordinance currently does allow me to reduce parking for historic structures, which we did with the main structure. I am open to reducing the parking further for the additional three structures with more of a, with us being able to see the effects of the first reduction, and then also we are looking at providing more structured on-street parking in that neighborhood. As you know, there's Power Avenue Warehouse, and then there's Memorial Square. So at the time of planning commission, I had not had a chance to talk to Ken Gill, our Public Works Director, but since then, we have come up with a couple of concepts that we have our engineering department working on to get in front of Jesus, to either approve or deny, that could provide as much as, you know, 50 or 60 additional striped, defined, structured on-street parking, which would, of course, very much be taken into consideration for any further use or further reduction. Because, as you know, we want to manage our growth, and we don't want to overwhelm an area. So staff and the planning commission did recommend denial on this variance. And mainly, our concerns is, so the variance is for carte blanche any use, and our concerns are really with those uses that have a high parking impact. Another assembly use, restaurants, wine bars, all of those types of uses that really require a heavy impact on parking. Not so concerned about offices or retail or things that have generally a lower parking impact, and we believe that we can further work through those reductions through the existing ordinance and providing that more structured on-street parking around Mitchell to kind of, or around Memorial Square to sort of pick up the slack of, of providing any additional off-street parking. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. You said the reason that this was not approved is because you have three buildings that have not gotten a certificate of occupancy. What happens when he gets those? Will then he can come back, or explain that?
So the variance would allow him to occupy those buildings with any use. And since we don't know what those uses would be, we have concerns that that parking demand for any, any use out there could overwhelm the neighborhood and the area, since parking is based off of a proposed use.
So I'm just trying to understand the correlation between this and another poor decision. Where's their off-street parking? 5D Tavern, where's their off-street parking? Where's Moonshine's off-street parking? Where's El Paso's off-street parking? Where's Greg Brother's off-street parking? I don't see any difference here.
Actually, the difference is there's a lot of off-street parking here.
There's more here.
Yes, a lot more here.
I just, I think it's, I think it's, for me, I mean, I'm hoping someone else to make the motion, but I don't, I don't mind making the motion that, you know, we should approve this variance.
I move that we approve this variance.
I'll second it. And to add to it, I see that we have someone that's willing to invest in downtown, in an area that has not been anything around retail. It's been, you know, historically educational in that area, but why would we shut down any innovation and growth and pin him down to what he wants that property to be? If he's going to try and invest money, he might have to tinker with his ideas back and forth to see what's going to be most beneficial to make the project work and be good for the community and what, what the, the community's going to be able to support. We can figure out and stripe around Memorial Square. I was just down at Power Avenue last night. I parked around Memorial Square. People know how to park. It's, it's not like it had to be striped so that people knew to park there. I have no issue granting this variance.
I don't either.
I, I think what's happened is we're very fortunate that somebody's come in and bought this building and is doing exactly what we want to see happen with it. And certainly, given where they are, the fact that they do have Power Avenue where else across the street that has events, that has lots of parking and people, people park there, people know how to park over there. I mean, it's just, it's been there a long time, and, and to me, it just, it doesn't make sense not to allow them to build that property.
I have a question. At a later date, should those buildings be occupied? Can angular parking be put on William Street? And if so, who would be responsible for the financing of that angular parking on, on the east side of the school? Would that be on the city dollar or on a Mr. Wharton's dollar?
So we're looking at currently putting, seeing if we can develop angular parking around Memorial Square, with the exception of Wheeler Street, because it's not paved as wide as the other three streets around Memorial Square, which would provide a lot more additional parking at the angled design versus the parallel design. But the variance would allow him to occupy those three buildings with any use.
Viping, right?
Right, and typically, you, you wouldn't have maybe parallel parking in front of residents across Memorial Square, but you might have angular parking on the other side.
So there's one block of residential across Memorial Square that we may have to provide no parking if we can, to fit the angle in, because those streets are a little bit narrower than...
Put it there in the angle, too.
Right, then you have angled right across the street, which is, you can get a lot more angled in a block than you can parallel. Parallel, really, you can only get eight, max.
Let's see if we create a parking issue. I don't want to stifle the growth. I don't want to stifle the growth.
Okay. Let's cross that bridge when we come through.
I just don't want to stifle the growth. Let's see if we can-
There's plenty of parking.
There is. You might have to walk a little further.
Well, and to answer your question, we, we would be responsible for it.
Yep.
Okay. The city would.
Right.
Not Mr. Wharton, okay, then.
Yep. All right.
So, so that I'm clear, so the, the drafted resolution was to-
Deny.
-deny, and the motion is to-
Approve.
-approve, okay. Just making sure.
Is that the proper way to phrase here?
So we technically need to overturn the planning commission's decision on this and approve the variance, but that would be the language that you use, and we do already have a separate resolution prepared for that.
However you restate that, how do I restate that?
Uh, you are overturning the planning commission's denial of the variance and granting the variance to section twenty-one dash ninety-two.
That's what I'm doing. Thank you very much.
Second, that as stated. So denying the planning commission's denial, overturning their denial, overturning their denial and approving the variance.
Double negative is a positive.
Before we're trying to get to, something positive. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the variance is granted. Item E two.
If you will give me one second to get to that one, I had to go back to our other part of the agenda. Item E two is appointing four members to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Good evening, mayor and council. The resolution before you tonight is to appoint four positions to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Parks and Recreation Purpose, Commission Purpose was clarified in ordinance twenty-twenty dash one forty-one, which states the purpose is to basically advise the Parks and Recreation Department on matters pertaining to acquisition of parks or planning, the development of park and recreation areas and facilities, and any other items as determined by the Parks and Recreation Director. So there's nine members on this commission. They serve three-year staggered terms, and they may not serve more than two consecutive terms. Former members will be eligible to serve again after abstaining for a member of a minimum of one year from their term expiration, and any member originally appointed to fill a vacancy may serve two full terms in addition to an unexpired term if the vacancy had less than eighteen months remaining. So the current members are Mr. Lee Keeling, Mike Rivera, Gal Repka. Those are the three that, their term is ending tonight, or this, this, end of this month, and Mr. Brian Billingsley, Jesse Olivades, Ashley McGee, Lori Eder, John Hayek, and then we have one vacant position. The vacant position was created when Mr. Justin Urbana was removed from the board due to absences, and that was pertaining to their bylaws. So we need to appoint three members to full-term positions that will expire in twenty-twenty-six, and then the vacancy position that will expire one year sooner in twenty-twenty-five. So we have seven applicants. There were originally eight, and we had one withdrawal just late Friday. Mr. Briggs withdrew his application, so his name is not listed here, and his name is crossed out on your ballots. So I'll take any questions. I do want to remind you that you can't vote by secret ballots, so your name and the vote number is at the top of each of your ballots already. So if you'll, at this time, circle the name of four applicants that you wish to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. The four applicants with the highest number of votes will be placed in the resolution. If there are any ties, then we will vote again, and then we'll decide on who gets the shorter-term position after this vote, so it'll be a separate vote. Okay, so we did that in one vote. So the four individuals with the most votes are Glenda Nichol, Donna Roberts, Harley Fisk, and Julie Hughes. So now of those four applicants, I need you to circle one on the next ballot to determine the one person who gets the shorter duration, because they're taking the partial term.
Can't we just let them pick?
Is it, is it, wait. We've done it before, April, were there, whoever got the least number of votes?
There were two that had a tie on that, which would be Mr. Fisk and Ms. Hughes.
Flip a coin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just flip a coin. Anybody got a coin?
Don't carry money with me anymore.
Rock, paper, scissors.
No one has a coin.
Sorry.
Check and make sure that it heads down the tail.
I know, that's Mr. Fisk.
He chose the coin.
Do you want to flip, sir? There you go.
Call it, Mr. Fisk.
He takes heads.
Oh. He had one job. It's on heads.
It's on heads.
You wish to take a longer term?
Okay, so that would mean Ms. Hughes would get the shorter term.
Okay.
The partial term.
It works out.
He's going to make the motion. He placed that dime there since last week.
I don't even remember who the four people were.
Here you go.
I move we appoint-
Conny Nichol.
Donna Roberts, Harlan Fisk, and Julie Hughes to the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Second.
And to clarify, Ms. Hughes will be taking the one-year term.
A two-year.
Two-year term, I'm sorry. All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you for all the volunteers. As always, it is a very tough decision. I'm glad to see, I mean, we had seven very, very qualified applicants, and thank y'all for being willing to serve on the Parks Commission. All right, C three, I mean, E three.
Item E three is a resolution allocating funding for nonprofit organizations for FY twenty-twenty-four from the Child Safety Fund.
Okay. Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, I'm here to present the overview of the Child Safety Program grant allocation funding. We received one hundred and twenty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars in requests this year from seven applicants. That's quite a bit more than we have gotten in previous years. We did get three new applicants this year. Our budget for this program is fifty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars in available funding. We did recommend funding recommendations to all seven applicants, and it was done through an internal committee of department representatives from finance, two from finance, one from municipal court, legal, and police department. And we did utilize an objective data analysis for this. And so what we took a look at was, did they comply with all of our documents? How many children are they serving, and how many units of service are they providing to the youth in the community? Attendance at our workshop, while it's not mandatory, there are updates usually annually that we like to relay to them to ensure they know how to complete their application. If they were a prior fund award recipient, did they use their funding and had they complied with those requirements? So those are the things that we took a look at when reviewing the applications. We had the applications open for a three-week period. It opened August seventh and closed August twenty-fifth. During that timeframe, we held three applicant workshops. We sent notifications to the award winners on August the thirtieth on their amounts. There was an appeal deadline of September the sixth, and we did get one appeal from an organization, from Hope of South Texas, and that was included in the packet. The committee did meet about the appeal, and we are recommending to continue with the original fund allocation, which I'll show on the next screen, unless council wishes otherwise. And then the contracts after approval of the recommendations will become effective October the first for funding for October first through September thirtieth. They will then be reimbursed on a quarterly basis. They'll send us reports throughout the year, or they can get their reimbursement upfront after the first quarter, or whichever quarter in which they spend their funding. So this is an overview of the applications, or the applicants that received funding. In the middle column, you'll see what they requested, and on the far right, you'll see what was recommended. So A World for Children, we were recommending eight thousand dollars. Boys and Girls Club, we're recommending six thousand nine hundred and forty. Girl Scouts of Greater South Texas, we're recommending six thousand nine hundred and forty. Golden Crescent and Hope of South Texas there, we're recommending eight thousand for each of those. Mid Coast Family Services, that one was recommended at fifty-eight ninety. You may wonder why, a little more, and that was just to round out the number, if you will, there. That helped to clear up that seven-dollar deficit we had. The Gabriel Project, we're recommending six thousand nine hundred and forty dollars. And this is the overview of the reimbursement process, so we do not allocate the funding upfront. They have to submit reimbursement documentation. That is submitted to me, and then I forward that to finance, and Victoria from the finance, from the grants division, will prepare that reimbursement to them, and so they can get it all in one lump sum if they've spent it all in that first quarter or throughout the year. If their event or their program, their funding is later in the year. And this is just an overview, and I'll, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Could you go back to the agencies?
Sure.
Which agencies received money last year?
Boys and Girls Club, Golden Crescent Casa, Hope of South Texas, and Mid Coast Family Services. Those are the four returning organizations, and they were also in our first year, so we're into the third year now of our program.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Toda.
No problem.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, got a motion and a second to approve item E three. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Item E four, Mr. Novasad.
Item E four is a resolution allocating funding to outside agencies for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four from the hotel occupancy tax funds.
All right. Thank you, mayor and council. I'm briefly going to go over a quick presentation about our Hotel Occupancy Tax Awards Program, our annual program that went very well this year. As you recall, possibly, I came in June and talked about some changes for the program, which I can, happy to say, were very well received by all of the applicants, as well as our subcommittee. You can see the timeline there. It didn't change much from the year before. We had the applications open throughout the month of July. We had four different workshops, two in the evening, two in the afternoon, to allow all of our applicants to get the information they needed. And then we reviewed those applications, did the calculations, and presented those to the subcommittee, and no objections from the subcommittee on the recommendations. You know, the process uses objective data now. It's very clean, very fair, and it really leads to quick meetings, I'll say that, because it really uses that kind of data. And here tonight to go over, to consider the resolution, and then if it is approved, we'll get to hard at work with legal to finalize the contracts with everybody, which our city manager signs. Just a little background information, we have the same level of total funding that we've had for previous years. We did receive twenty-two applications, which was five less than year, five fewer than last year, which if you remember, last year was a record number of applications. That was a concern of council and, and just staff, that this program was growing, but we really couldn't grow the funding that much more. So I believe the, the changes already had an impact in that we had some folks who say, okay, we might just get left out of this. We'll, we'll find other ways to, to fund our events. But we did see the number of, the total amount of requests go up by about eight thousand dollars, so interesting note there. So I presented this in June, just how we split up the funds this year. We split them up into two different groups. Number, group one was events, a little less restrictive in that it could be nonprofit or for-profit. Now, we did require everybody to be able to show room nights from the most recent event or season to the application period, but the limiting factor in this one was only the top ten room night generators were eligible. And then group two, arts and historic preservation and promotion, a little more restrictive in that it had to be a not registered nonprofit, had to have a specific purpose of, you know, their organization to advance the arts or historic preservation and promotion. They did have to have a minimum of two events or exhibits, and like with group one, be able to show room nights for the events or season most recent to the application period. One of the things we talked about, didn't really decide in June necessarily, was the percentages that we would split the funds up. Staff worked on that and discussed that with our subcommittee, which they approved. And you see a majority of the funding went to the events, which typically are the larger hotel room night drivers, and a smaller portion went to arts and historic preservation and promotion. And then within those groups, the funds were evenly distributed. Seventy percent of those funds were evenly distributed by all applicants hitting those, applicants who hit those four markers, which I'm happy to say everybody did. We had some really solid applications this year, probably the best I've seen in, in my time of looking over the program, that we had really solid applications. And then thirty percent within those groups are distributed based on the share of the room night total, and that helps that you don't get wild swings within the group from, say, the tenth place event to the, the first place event. But you'll see in the amounts that the fir, the higher room night generators did get, did get rewarded. So group one, you can see our top ten events there. All of these are, have been awarded before with the exception of NF Promotions, which was the, it's going, for this year is going to be the twenty-twenty-four Bridle and Kinte Expo, exciting event, newer, newer event to Victoria. Then you can see the average award amount at a little over eight thousand seven hundred. Last year, the average award amount was a little about forty-five hundred, so the, the award amounts went up. And you can see the ranking there. Actually, NF Promotions had more room nights in Victoria County four-H, but that was the max that NF Promotions asked for, so we didn't, you know, give them more than what they asked for, but you can see that, that breakdown there. And there was a couple of folks who unfortunately, you know, fell out of the top ten, but, you know, we encourage folks to try again and, and track their room nights more effectively, and, and we're always on hand to help out those events. You know, a success story, for instance, is Memorial Weekend Bash. They had trouble proving room nights for a while, and, and we helped them a few years ago, and, and they are now one of our top room night generators. So just because somebody's left out this year doesn't mean maybe next year they could come back with a stronger application, and we can help them with that. And then group two, everybody was awarded. You can see the groups there. Just a little note on Theater Victoria. We broke their award out into two different amounts, because they applied for two different things, basically, that their twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four season, as well as Texfest. So that is a week-long regional theater performance group, like conference, that they have, and they basically kind of sell out the, the hotel, one of their hotel, their host hotel, the Homewood Suites. So they produce a whole lot in room nights, but we didn't want to, you know, when it, looking at their application, they only, in their budget, they only ask, they're only spending about four thousand dollars for Texfest, so we awarded them that, their max. And then the other calculation, that sixty-two eighteen is, is based on that even split and what they produced in room nights from their season. And then you can see the average award amount, while smaller for group two, is still pretty healthy, higher than last year's, which was around forty-five hundred. So the program really achieved its goal in preserving some funding for arts and historic preservation, but awarding those groups with a greater share of the funds who typically produce more hotel room nights. And we had an appeals process. All applicants were notified on August twenty-eighth. They're given the opportunity to appeal. We did not receive any letters, so there were none included in tonight's resolution. And we will work with our legal department to put together the contracts, have those two in October first. And the organizations, of course, just to, for a refresher, they don't get the money upfront. It's a reimbursement program. They're required to submit a post-event report after their event, and we can confirm all that documentation, that they did what they needed to receive their award. And so seventeen total awards, twenty-two total applications, and we did not receive any appeals, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
So I have a question. You have the, what was the percentage? Sixty-five percent for group one and thirty-five percent for group two? When you got to those that are awarded, which are the top ten in group one, and you looked at all the hotel nights that they got, did it come up to sixty-five percent compared to- at all the hotel nights that they got, did it come up to 65% compared to the overall total when you added group one and two together?
That's a fair question. Mayor, I don't have those figures off my head, I don't have that numbers, but I'd be happy to find out.
Probably not, though, because the golf event would skew it.
Right, right. I can say that, because, you know, we had, you know, for instance, the arts and historic preservation, the Tex Fest did very good in terms of producing room nights, that was well over 200, so. But then you had, it probably was pretty close, I could say, if I'm thinking, because the, for instance, the Club of Colony Creek produced 400 room nights, the Memorial Weekend Bash, about 225. So our top hitters in the group one did very well, but then we had some of those that kind of lifted that up in group two.
Curious, that breakout. I mean, you know, I want to make sure that we keep arts and historic preservation still up there, even if, you know, I'm curious if it was more, then we should go up more, but I don't want to go below that.
Right, I can tell you that most of, almost all of the group one had more than the typical group two hotel room night returns. The Tex Fest was a little bit of an outlier, but then again, that is in group two.
All right, I might get that number from you later.
Sure.
Just because I like numbers.
It would be nice to see, when you list all the people, then put the room nights next to them.
Yes, sir.
I'm aware that E4?
Second.
I see four, E4, it's E? E4, yes.
We're not going backwards. I tried already. All right, we got a motion and a second to approve item E4. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, item E5.
Item E5 is a resolution approving a cooperative purchasing contracts for various computers, software peripherals, and related equipment in the amount of $1,042,383.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just as a reminder to, you know, we, the IT Department does utilize corporate contracts, and part of that process is to, you know, fulfill our, the state procurement rules. Part of our process is that we, when we do use these contracts, we are reviewing to make sure that we're getting the best possible price available. Part of that process is that we're reaching out to each of those vendors to make sure they're using the proper contract that's going to give us the best value for the city. And then we also then verify by going to our open market to verify if that's still the cheaper price. I have a short presentation, if you'd like to see that, or if not.
I'd like to see it, I mean, it's a million dollars.
He said short.
Yes, he's already done.
So again, the majority of our cooperative purchases, we use is Texas DRR processing, DRR Information Services, the TIPS interlocal purchasing, Texas Buy Board, GSA, and then OMIA. This is sort of a breakdown of our contract purchases. As you can see, Texas DRR takes the majority of those prices, 949,297, or 80% of that goes through Texas DRR processing. And then when we get into the actual breakdown by category, software maintenance is our biggest cost, that's the 858,000, which is 72% of that. And this next one is the one, that's the fun one. It's IT is the majority of those charges. And of course, that is, want to remind council that, you know, we are an internal department, and a lot of those charges are placed in my department, so then it can be passed on to the other, to the other departments.
Yes. I never see you taking all that, that big lump.
And that's it, if you have any other questions.
That was nice.
I'm, will we approve E5?
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve item E5. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. And that concludes action items, and we'll go into city manager's report, and we have one tonight. It's an update on local broadband improvement efforts by Mr. Derek Farrell. Did you have an assistant that was going to come help you?
I do not. Oh, Harrison? Yeah, no, he, he was here for a minute, and his mom came and got him.
It's getting to be bedtime.
Yeah. He, he did say this is very interesting, so.
You gotta get him out more, man.
I think he's a proponent of higher decimal numbers, so, you know. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm going to try to go quickly through a broadband update. I do want to thank Brett Willis, the general manager from Sparklight, for being here, so if you have questions that I can't answer, he said he will gladly answer them for every one of the providers. Real quickly, I want to go through a history that we've never talked about before, right? Because we're moving toward fiber optics, and so it's important that we understand, right, in 1850, in London, this guy John Tyndall demonstrated that you could broadcast light down a translucent tube, and he varied the light intensity, and he became the first person to use light to send data down a tube. Then in 1880, Alexander Graham Bell kind of modeled that idea here in the US, and he took what he, what people had been doing for a while on the telegraph with Morse code, and interrupted the light at the source while sending light down a tube to send data and messages over what would eventually be the internet, right? But, you know, telephones and voice were cheaper, and so we've never really talked about optical telegraphy. But using those two ideas, a guy named Cappani in 1952 went back to London and created just a few short meters of the very first fiber optic cable, where he sent data down the fiber optic cable. It didn't take much longer beyond that, between, before two very important things happened. In Chicago, AT&amp;T sent a, built a three-mile network of fiber optic cables, and they sent data from their long line switch office all the way to the AT&amp;T Bell Resource Laboratory, it's named after Alexander Graham Bell. That data moved at 45 megabits per second. So just for reference, we consider high-speed internet today to be 25 megabits per second download speed. So they were, the very first institutional or commercial network used was faster than what we consider broadband today. And then in Long Beach, California, GTE created the very first network of about 100 homes and businesses using fiber optic cables. And so if it seems a little bit weird that in 2018, the city of Victoria is still complaining about connectivity, it probably was, right? Everything that you asked for as a council, when you asked for FCC standards and connectivity to improve, and what you created, right, when you created the Victoria Broadband Commission, was absolutely warranted based on a long history that Victorians were waiting to receive. We developed and worked through the RFP, we worked through a number of things. Sparklight and their proposal on the RFP kind of asked us, hey, just let us do it. And then thanks to Representative Morrison, and a conversation she had with the Texas Tribune, AT&amp;T called and said, hey, we want to do that, too. And so we saw provider efforts that came about in Victoria, that made it so that the $3 million worth of Rescue Act funding you gave me for this project, I was able to give back to you. We spent no, no public funds on getting this data outside of some planning efforts, getting this effort, right? It's estimated by AT&amp;T that by the end of this year, their service will be available to 12,291 of the approximately 23,000 homes in Victoria. They, so far, as of August, when I got these numbers, had already run 153 miles of fiber through Victoria, and invested over $20 million of, into the infrastructure in our community. Similarly, Sparklight estimates that by the end of the year, they will, they'll have the potential to serve 17,352 homes with over 140 miles of fiber that's been run so far. Now, their investment in the community is a little bit different than AT&amp;T's, in that they've invested the same tens of millions of dollars into infrastructure, but they also, if you've driven on Navarro, you see their storefront. They have set up shop, and they've hired employees, and they have made a presence in the community. And so we're grateful to have both of these providers sort of jumping in and joining the connectivity race that we've sort of encouraged in Victoria. Optimum, formerly known as Suddenlink, has also sort of increased their investment in Victoria as well. As you may remember, they don't have a fiber-to-the-home network, they have a hybrid fiber coax network, and so they have increased the number of nodes by 25 this year, or they will increase by 25 this year. That's beneficial to their customers in two ways. One, the nodes, think about it like a bus, as customers hop off of those nodes onto either AT&amp;T or Sparklight's networks, the nodes become less crowded. And then as there are more nodes, more buses in the system, they're even less crowded. So service quality should begin to improve across the board, regardless of who that provider is. Optimum wanted to make sure we also acknowledge their donations, they've provided lunch for some DTR support staff, and then highly recognized both high schools, both Victoria High Schools in Texas Football Magazine. There are several other providers in and around Victoria that are working to provide and improve their services. You're all familiar with TISD. About a year ago, year and a half ago, they were purchased by a company called VTX1, and they continue to expand their footprint. Infineum with, from Victoria Electric, also continues to provide their footprint, including fiber in areas of the county, including down to the port, right? They've, they've increased connectivity at the port. A company called Nextlink has set up an office in El Campo, and they're moving this direction. They've set up six towers in Victoria County, and will continue moving to service Victoria. Now, they are a fixed wireless provider, kind of all of these so far have been fixed wireless, all these are. Resound Networks was given, back before we started this whole thing, Resound Networks received several million dollars from the Rural Digital Opportunity Fund from the FCC to provide service all over Victoria County. And so they are, you've seen, you've probably seen some of those blue trucks with the big white letters on Resound in town, but all of their efforts so far are out in the county. All of this culminates in to say that by the end of this year, the vast majority of homes in Victoria will be covered by, by up to three providers, have up to three fiber wired options, right, that they can choose from. Now, that's good and bad news for us. It is good news because of the connectivity. Where the bad news comes in, and it's, and in my opinion, it's still pretty good news, is that most of the funding that is being created by the Texas Broadband Development Office, including 3.3 million dollars from the Infrastructure and Jobs Act, we will not qualify for inside of Victoria. There are still some programs, like a pole replacement program, where they may be creating still some of the rules, and we may find some eligibility for that, but because we have zero unserved areas in Victoria, and most areas are completely served inside the city limits, we won't qualify for many of those funds. Similarly, the National Telecommunications and Information Administration, NTIA, is kind of the driver for that. They're where the state gets, where Texas will get the 3.3 million, which, by the way, is more than any other state in the country, including California. But they have another program, call it, yes, sir?
3.3 million or billion?
A million. Please, let me make sure.
Yeah, it's a million, it just doesn't seem like it'd go very far in Texas.
It doesn't, doesn't. Not when, not when folks like Sparklight and AT&amp;T are investing tens of millions.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's 3.3 million. I double-checked that, too, when I first read it. But the other is a 3.1 million digital equity program, and this is kind of an area where if you would like us to continue working on these efforts, we can look for things like nonprofits or other groups that may want to put devices in the hands of people who don't, who have access. So we were blanketed with access, but it may be devices or other things, and these programs could fund those types of things. The other thing, from a job creation standpoint, we want to thank Victoria College for working with a third-party provider to develop two training courses, where for approximately $3,300 and two weeks of your life, you can become a Level 2 certified fiber optic technician, where you're installing these things. So they have a few programs that are, that are moving through there, they're just getting ready to start the first class, I think, coming up this month. You know, when we first started this a few years ago, three and a half years ago, we said, hey, let's find a way to make the internet, particularly high-speed internet, available, reliable, and affordable in Victoria. I think we've been blessed to have private providers jump in in front of us and take that case. It's made my life a lot easier. I didn't have to work on the construction of a middle mile network. We're grateful for the investments in Victoria, both from, you know, the private providers and from the state, right, and from other agencies. If I can answer any questions for you, I'd be glad to do that.
I have a question. When we started this whole process back in 2019, 2018, we talked about, you know, the first mile also. What's the status of that, with that big loop?
So that Big Loop project highly depended on everyone using, all the counties that were involved, I think it's like six or seven counties that it would cross, using their CDBG hazard mitigation funds that would be, going to be given to their COGS for that. That plan sort of fell apart, one, because the funding takes a very long time to get, we still barely have ours, right? But the other thing is, in that time that it took to kind of procure that funding, the guy who was leading that effort left to go become a city manager in Florida, the people who were engaged with that sort of fell apart. And so that program, as far as I can tell, has also fallen apart. Other counties were more interested in seeing that mitigation funding spent elsewhere. And so the effort from that program sort of has dissolved.
And at, and at the time, it was unknown how the COGS were going to go about allocating the funds, and so the hope, or the idea at the time, was that the COGS would be able to make the decision for their own respective regions to invest that money into this project. But what ended up happening was that everybody ended up coming up with formulas, you know, to split up that fund among all of the entities, and so now, this effort, rather than just working with, you know, half a dozen COGS to coordinate it, now all of a sudden meant coordinating with dozens of communities to try and, you know, encourage them to use their funding for the project, and it just became, it just became too complicated.
And then, we'd also talked about making sure that loop was continuous around Victoria. How are we on that?
Well, given that there's not that loop, right, from, from around this up here, that wasn't built. That said, the loop, the portion that that loop would have used in Victoria is owned and operated by Fiberlight, another company that's there. That still exists, it's still there. It's sort of incumbent on the providers to work with Fiberlight to use that. Now, Fiberlight has gone through another acquisition, they're owned by a different company, they've got a different set of goals, they're doing different things than they were at that time. But that's a conversation really between the providers and the, and Fiberlight to use that, that dark fiber that exists. So it's built, it's there, it's just a matter of whether or not these providers want to build their own or use it.
Because, yeah, I'd be curious to see some of those maps from back then, and where we've progressed on it, you know, because we'd looked at that ring around 463 or whatever, and then spoking out down the major highways, and kind of building out even throughout the county, and just kind of see what type of progress has been made over the last, I don't know, four, five years.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I can tell you that on Fiberlight's hub, unless it's been working with the broader providers, and they don't tend to share those, that level of detail in their maps, on Fiberlight's hub, they lacked about 50 miles worth of fiber before they could have kind of covered the whole county with a, with a hub-and-spoke model, particularly on the middle mile piece. I don't know that they've ever built that, just because they had other priorities, when, particularly when the company changed, and they started looking at, you know, how to make their new owners money. So they've, they've probably, it's probably, if we look at the maps, they're probably not a lot different than today.
Okay. And then, for the city, right, we had that wedge kind of southeast corner. Are we looking good for coverage? So, you know, I guess the overall coverage map for the city that we're serving fiber to all parts of the city?
Right, we are, as far as, you know, if I can get back to, if you can kind of see the blue area there, I mean, it is, it is fully covered, and I've checked some of those areas with the.
I'm talking about with fiber, not a hybrid.
Right.
Just fiber.
Right, both, both providers have built in the south side of the city already. So, in fact, I think Sparklight has a, one of their hubs that they're building over there.
Okay.
I have a question, but I don't know how to ask it. When we're going to do the loop, we were going to have, if the internet got cut from Houston, for example... from Houston, for example, we would still have another source of internet. Do we only have, only from Houston coming in or do we have from San Antonio or?
Well, so that's sort of the joy and the benefit of some of the providers that we have. Brett can actually probably tell you a story about, um, in their case, they have fiber, um, going out toward San Antonio Corpus area, right? Um, and they have redundancies built. And so by using and leveraging some of the bigger markets, AT&amp;T and, and Sparklight or what used to be Cable One, their bigger networks do connect us in those, in those places. That said, in order for that to work in the way that we talked about, you'd have to be subscribed to the fiber, to the, to both providers, right? To, to leverage those networks in both directions. Um, so in the same way that we talked about where we'd have that security that, you know, connectivity is available, it is available. It's not as easily available as what we had hoped or planned for with that long fiber connection, right? Uh, which was part of why we were using, we're planning to use hazard mitigation funds for it, that it would make it easily available to everyone, right? Um, but there is connectivity in Victoria in both directions now, um, as opposed to just to Houston. Just have to call the right people to get access to it.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Thank you.
Appreciate the, the update and thanks to Sparklight and for AT&amp;T and Optimum for continuing to make investments in Victoria for our internet. It's very important for us. We are going to have an executive session tonight. We don't have a work session, but we do have a relatively short executive session tonight.
Yes.
And, uh, we will be making those decisions when we come out of it. So at this time, we will recess into executive session.
The city council recessed for executive session on the 19th day of September 2023 at 7:10 PM. The subject matter of the executive ses, session deliberation is as follows. Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.071, and 551.072.